All right, good morning, everybody. It's 7:30, and I think we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to our council work session for May 23rd. Our agenda today is getting an update on DMAC and also the CB3 Violence Interruption Program, get an update on that as well. So Scott, I'll quickly turn it over to you, and let's get going.
Okay, I think I'll have President Denson come on up, and we'll let him start with his presentation.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank the city for all you do for DMAC and all of our students. I mean, you've been a great partner for many, many years. And there aren't many projects that have been successful that you haven't played some role in, so thank you for all your support. And I start my 20th year at DMAC in November, so I figured I should do a report out to the city council at least once every 20 years. So I'll, and I won't see you in another 20, at least very likely I won't. This is kind of a state of DMAC, and I'm going to run through this pretty quick. It is our 56th year. We serve 6,550 square miles. I call it the economic sweet spot of Iowa. And of course, as far as you're concerned, our two biggest entities here are urban campus. And of course, we've got Southridge on the south side and West Des Moines on the west side, so it's a great area of the state to be in. We're the largest community college by far in Iowa, which makes sense, given the size of our district and our businesses, but we're very proud of the area we have. We serve a little over 36,000 credit students, 22,000 non-credit students each year, which makes us, you know, if you look at unduplicated headcount, we're the largest college or university in the state in most years. We have students from every county in the state of Iowa. 97% of our students come from Iowa, they're Iowans, and 95% of our students stay in Iowa once they graduate. Concurrent enrollment, legislature has a great program of helping schools finance college credits for high school students. The blue lines are the number of credits. We did drop a little bit during the pandemic, but right now it looks like next fall is going to be another record-setting year. And it's very good for these kids that are ready for college education, and actually we need to roll that out to even more students than we're serving now. Market penetration, we look at age 15 to 54 as the group that's most likely to come to DMAC at some time. The red equals more market penetration. There's 2010, there's 2019. We built a number of new facilities. We try to be within driving distance of everybody within the state, everybody within our district, but clearly we're getting a higher and higher penetration of the students that are college-age and wanting to go to school. Again, it's our numbers. We're 56% female, 23% minority. I'm very proud of that number, but it needs to continually grow. We're only 21% career in technical education, which is, we probably need to grow that. More and more students need to come to us for a lot of these high-paid jobs that require no more than a two-year degree. Over 60% of the jobs in Iowa can be gained with a two-year degree or less. Academic programs, we have 226 degrees certificates and diplomas, and there you can see our top majors, liberal arts and sciences, that would be the transfer group, and then health sciences would be next. And again, in each of these areas, there's a tremendous demand in the workforce from our local area companies. Everybody wants DMAC students. We're the only community college in the world that Grinnell articulates with. We articulate with all the regions, all the privates, and we just articulated with Tuskegee University. We're the only community college in the Midwest that Tuskegee articulates with, and we're very proud of that, given Iowa's connection with George Washington Carver, et cetera. We're now in the midst of our most comprehensive strategic plan we've ever done. This time, it's more than a book on a shelf. We're actually looking at specific things, and we're driving it down into every department, looking at our stakeholders, our people, our internal processes and our stewardship. And again, our goal is to serve the communities, the businesses, and students throughout our district, and we're very proud of the role we play. Two of our higher-level initiatives in our new strategic plan will be diversity, equity, and inclusion. Iowa's becoming much more diverse. Diversity is the solution to Iowa's workforce problems, so we're very excited about increasing our market penetration in those communities, particularly within central Iowa. And then Guided Pathways is actually an academic thing that's going nationally. Many students come to us that are undecided. When I talk to our new students, I say, "How many of you are undecided?" About half raise their hands, and then I say, "Well, about half of you are undecided, and the other half are wrong." Because I started out to be a veterinary, I never even came close, so you never know. So we want to do more to help students choose a path, get on the path, stay on the path, and then leave with a quality education. And this is a national program called Guided Pathways, just to reduce the clutter in that academic degree and help students see it at an earlier time. And then DEI, again, I mentioned the diversity increase within central Iowa. We're very proud of what we're doing. In our new DEI initiative last year, 40% of our hires were diverse. This year, so far since July 1 of last year, we're 33%. We know that more and more of our students need to walk on campus and see people that look like them. We have a great counseling and advising program. We've got free tutoring, but we need to make sure we serve all of their needs. And just a few of our successes. The Department of Education came out with a program last year called College and Career Transition Counselors. I mentioned that most students are undecided when they come out of high school. That's because our high school, well, junior high, high school, and elementary counselors, they've got about three times the caseload that they should, and they're so busy right now with mental health, discipline, and registration that they don't have time to spend time with students. We got a grant last year to hire one. We hired nine. We hired another two this year. We partnered with two K-12s. The counselors spend two days in each of the K-12s, and then a day at DMAC. They're not there to recruit for us, they're there to help students choose their path, whatever it may be. We're now in the process of hiring one for Des Moines Public, which will be our first one. And many of you may have heard Avenue Scholars, which is a program out of Omaha that supports low-income students in Omaha, and working primarily with Metro Community College. Avenue Scholars is coming here. Mid-American gave them well over $1 million to help fund the first few years. They'll put, they've got staff on the ground already. Their pilot is going to be in Roosevelt and East High, working with low-income students there, and then gradually moving out into the other three. These are the first seven transition counselors that DMAC hired. And we also received a statewide $2 million earmark. Congresswoman Miller Meeks ran it for Indian Hills, again, helping us hire more college and career transition counselors to give our students more support. Dennis Alba and his wife Susan gave us a $1 million gift a few years ago to expand our culinary institute. I never say we're the best, but there's nobody any better when it comes to many of our programs, and culinary is the top of the list. In fact, today, we've got about 30 people who are in France that are flying back after our French Chef Exchange. We didn't have it for two years. They just finished a great experience. They will leave 10 students there that work in French restaurants for the next two weeks, but it's a beautiful facility. Carl Chevrolet gave us a $1 million gift, he and his wife Penny, to expand our auto-tech program. We doubled the size of the program. It's now a beautiful facility. Here are 308 students from all over the state. We run the only skills contest for auto-technology in the state. Great program, always full, and jobs in big demand. Urban campus, which is closest to us right now, we're just finishing a $25 million addition. On the right of the DMAC letters is a new STEM center, all biology, chemistry labs. On the left side is a student area for the coffee shop, as well as a conference area. What I'm most excited about, we moved from ugly buildings and parking lots to beautiful buildings and some green space. So it is really a great campus. It is the first majority students have called our college/university campus in the state of Iowa. We serve about 5,000 students there. We're very excited as that continues to grow. You and I, as you and I at DMAC now, they've actually got staff on the ground there. Students can get the last two years of a four-year degree on that campus, and if it's a low-income student, you and I will buy down tuition so that the student gets a four-year degree at DMAC rates, which is a tremendous saving. So you and I have done a great job of partnering. Fairway gave us a grant to expand our wellness facilities on our Boone campus, which is where our athletics is that year, and they say it's because we gave them a new building. Our men's basketball team finally won the national championship, and I should have brought the ring. They are heavy, too heavy to wear. This year, we came in number three in the nation, so we've got a great program up there. But our students are most recognized by their academic achievement. We have one of the highest graduation rates with the best grades of any athletic team in the community college world. We got a grant also to open up a new welding classroom and conference space in Carroll, Iowa, on our Carroll campus. It was groundbreaking. We also were given all the Maytag buildings five years ago. We're now in the process of working with the developer to put in market-rate housing, a hotel, a restaurant, et cetera. We got a $14 million grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Again, we're active in all of our communities, and it's going to be beautiful to bring back many of these historic Maytag buildings to some of their glory. And politics aside, we try to get every politician on campus. We have these great medallions that DMAC makes. President Obama's got one, President Trump's got one, and I gave President Biden's to Dr. Jill Biden when she visited us a while ago, and these are made by our tool and die department. So it's just a great example of what our students can do. Transportation security, I know Connie just flew in. Those friendly people at the airport in 2011, TSA came to us, asked us to create a Homeland Security Certificate program for the Des Moines Airport screeners. The three courses are at the bottom. In 2014, we put it online. In 2017, the head of the TSA from DC flew in, summoned us to the airport, told us there were 80 colleges and universities doing TSA-20 for their airports, but they were so happy with DMAC's model that they gave us 36 states, they terminated 78 of the contracts, gave us 36 states, 75% of the country, 220 airports, 22,000 agents to train. That was a cool deal until 2019, when they fired the other one. Now we've got all 50 states, 440 airports, 43,000 agents that we're training. It's a grant we get every year, a couple million dollars to train. And TSA is so happy that if one of their screeners doesn't have a two-year degree and wants one, they will pay the screener to get the two-year degree from DMAC online. Last May, we had a student from every state in the Union graduate. This year, we had one guy drive in from Baltimore, Maryland, the other one drove in from Midland, Texas, just to attend graduation last week. This is a big deal for these individuals, and it's a great opportunity for them. We partnered with Iowa State to create a new cyber hub. It's a two-plus-two model program in cybersecurity. I mean, not sure you're as aware of it as we are. It's a big deal, and if you haven't been breached, we're all going to be breached sooner or later. But not because we were breached, but because of our good work. NSA picked us as a Center of Excellence for Cybersecurity Design. We're the only college in Iowa that's got such a designation. Iowa State's got one for their master's program, but again, we're big on the cyber area. We, DMAC took over the senior college in central Iowa last year. Great programming for adults. Goldman Sachs chose us four years ago to be their only statewide program to deliver their 10,000 small business program throughout the state of Iowa. I think they've now got others, but we just finished our seventh cohort, so now we've got about 212 companies, and these are small companies for all across Iowa that come in for a fully paid, it's kind of an MBA in business development, to help these small businesses grow their businesses. Kosovo, Iowa, of course, you know, Des Moines got a consulate for Kosovo. We've been very active in Kosovo for a number of years. I've been there three times. Most pro-American country in the world. This is the main drag in Pristina. Iowa flags everywhere. They love the Iowa National Guard, and Iowa is very, very celebrated there. It is a beautiful country, and if it's not on your top 10 places to visit, it needs to be. And we did receive a $1 million grant from the Millennium Challenge Corporation. The Millennium Foundation Kosovo picked 28 women from Kosovo to spend two years, fully expenses paid, in the energy trades in Iowa. Solar, wind, welding, and some computer sciences. They graduated. The average grade point average was 3.8, and they're now back in Kosovo working in the energy industry. Mid-American, we have an energy park. Energy, of course, is a big training area right now. They gave us a used nacelle, so we've got a nacelle that's being put into operation on the ground, just to show all the moving parts, as well as a solar field, to teach the energy trades, and Mid-American gave us the nacelle. The Evelyn K. Davis Center for Working Families down by our urban campus, an amazing thing. You know, Evelyn K. Davis talked to Jim County and Barry Griswell, and they're fulfilling her dream to support individuals who are coming in and needing help getting into the workforce, getting a job and/or going to school. Jill Wells, a DMAC graduate, actually put a new mural on the north side of the building. You cannot drive by this and appreciate everything that's there. You need to walk around. It is a beautiful facility. Evelyn K. serves about 5,000 individuals a year. Very successful program right across from our urban campus. And then the legislature has given the community college a number of sources of money to be able to help with training of individuals. We call it the Workforce Training and Economic Development Fund. Because of that, we developed a number of new certificates for those individuals that can't spend a full year or two going through a college. Very successful programming. Future Ready Iowa has been a great hit. Last Dollar Scholarship pays for tuition before a student takes out a loan in over 50 different high-demand areas. In the last two years, we've had 2,886 students draw on over $7.2 million in state funding to pay their tuition in these high-demand areas. It is a big deal and very, very, very successful. Dennis Alba, I mentioned him earlier, his only degree after high school is with DMAC, very successful. He holds a golf tournament for scholarship on his golf course in Ankeny every year. Last year, in a one-day event, we netted 407,000. It wasn't our biggest record, but all money given to DMAC Foundation goes into scholarships. We cover all our costs through other sources, so every dollar given goes to help a student somewhere. We were picked as one of 13 community colleges by the National Science Foundation to increase our capacity for STEM grants. We're very proud of that. The Lumina Foundation and the New America Foundation picked us as one of six colleges in the country to be a model for workforce development, workforce implementation training. I'm excited because these are five great schools in with us, and we're looking to see how we can actually do a better job. DMAC was the first education institution that Amazon picked on the state of Iowa to be an education partner. They give free college education to their associates that have been with them over 90 days. We're very excited. I actually spent two days out at Amazon headquarters here, where they've got 2,000 employees recruiting students, so it's going to be a great opportunity for them. In December, the governor gave us $1 million to open a new career academy in Templeton, Iowa. We've got sites all over the state, but this is a great facility with the four schools out there. And Google picked us as one of two community colleges in the entire United States to pilot their software engineering certificate. Google gives the certificate free to 20 of our students, plus pays them $5,000 to go through the experience to test this program. So we're very excited about that. In 2016, DMAC was picked number 10, and I don't mean number 10 of the 15 community colleges. We were picked number 10 of the 1,717 two-year programs in the United States based on value. I mean, we focus on the bottom line. We've got the highest bond rating of any community college in the state, the lowest property tax levy, and the lowest tuition and fees of any college or university in the state of Iowa. And to kind of wrap it up, Forbes in December picked DMAC the number-one employer in the state of Iowa. We didn't get many money. We didn't sponsor anything. We're very proud of this. Number four was John Deere, number four was Principal, five was John Deere, six was State of Iowa, nine was Iowa State, and 13 was University of Iowa. I mean, who pays attention to numbers? But we're very proud of what we do, and again, we run like a business, and our connection with the business community is very important. So our brand is "Life's Calling," our tagline is "If it's dreamable, it's doable," but what I thought the billboard should really say is "Life's Calling, answer your darn phone." There are so many opportunities out there, as you know. We all know people that need to be doing better professionally, need better careers. There's never been a better time. I can't guarantee it'll be free, but very likely it will be, as far as tuition and fees. So we try to do our best, and we're very, again, I'm going to end by thanking you for all the support you've given us, so thank you very much.
Rob, if you had been behind the wheel of a truck that brought you here, you would have had a speeding ticket.
I have never gotten a speeding ticket in a truck.
Well, that was a speed presentation, but hey, could you, there's a really great program that doesn't, that you participate in with Broadlawns, the Teach and the Tech Program. Could you just give a highlight of what that program's about?
Sure. Working with urban dreams, we start with CNAs, Certified Nurse Assistance, and again, once they start, that's kind of a laddered program up into a RN degree, and then, of course, you need the BSN these days. We've had this for three or four years now with Broadlawns, and the important thing is that these individuals will be earning and learning. They're actually working at Broadlawns in various ways as they get their CNA certifications, and many of them stay there after they graduate with CNA and move on to their LPN, then RN. Very successful program. And actually, we're going to partner with Broadlawns. It's very likely that Broadlawns will be providing a nurse for our urban campus. Again, we need more, you know, we're not in the health delivery business, but a lot of our students are in a situation where they really can't travel very far to get the help they need, and we need to make it more convenient, so I think by next year we should have a Broadlawns nurse on our urban campus. Been a great partnership. But we also partner very well with Mercy, even though they've got a healthcare program, and with Unity Point.
It might be a shorter presentation to say who you don't collaborate with.
We are, I'm proud of the fact, and we've always been. We try to be a good partner with everyone. It's not about us. You know, it's about helping our students, whoever they are, and community members do better.
Thanks for all that you and your staff do. Thank you.
And to take on to that, I know that you're involved with the By Degrees Program here in Des Moines, and that serves Findlay Elementary, Harding, and North, and you do a great job. DMAC does a great job with By Degrees, so thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, as I mentioned, we're putting a transition counselor in Des Moines Public Schools. This Avenue Scholars thing, that is a game changer. They've got over 1,000 low-income students in Omaha going to college because of what the support that Avenue Scholars provides. It's funded by the Walter and Suzanne Scott Foundation, so it's got horsepower behind it. We're the first community outside of Omaha they're going into, and they want to expand this model, because they know what makes a difference, because, you know, some, a lot of kids need the extra support.
Great job.
Anybody have anything else?
I just want, you have a lot of dual-credit programs. High school kids get to earn credit. Do you have, I don't know what the numbers are, but I know Des Moines does it through their own programs, so, but it goes directly into high school credit, I mean, college credit, so if they take certain classes?
Yes, we do about 15,000 district-wide, and actually, Des Moines Public does a lot with us, and they do also a lot of separate CTE through Central Academy, but we do a lot in the various high schools. Could do more, and we're trying to expand. I mean, we've had great partnership there, and it is a population that we need to increase to serve, increasingly serve, but that's why Avenue Scholars decided to come here. I mean, they saw it as a real opportunity for them and us. All right, I'll see you in 20. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rob, thank you.
Let me introduce, excuse me, I didn't look around. Felix Gallagher. We're governed by a board of nine trustees who run for public office every four years, spend hundreds of hours every year working on college issues. And Felix, been a trustee five years?
I'm coming up on my third term.
It feels like five. No, it's, but no, that would be, how many years then?
14.
Yeah, my gosh. Anyway, we got a good board, very supportive. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
All right, let's move on, and let's get an update on the CB3 Violence Interruption Program. Scott?
Yeah, just real quick, as I think the group's coming up, the council had asked for an update from Cure Violence and from our partners, and so asked them to come in, understanding that this is still pretty early in the process, just a few months into this. So I don't know, Ivette gets to start us out, maybe?
Creative Visions was established in October 1996 with a mission and purpose to interrupt gun shootings and violent crimes. We address and reduce the conditions of impoverishment and disparities commonly suffered by community residents, which causes the conditions that lead to criminal behavior. Creative Visions has developed and implemented programs specifically to garner community investment and systemic change to improve the conditions that plague marginalized and underserved communities.
After a year of preparation, on December 6, 2021, Creative Visions and the City of Des Moines entered into a contract to implement the CB3 VIP Initiative. By January 2022, we established a hiring panel consisting of 12 select community stakeholders and hired our complete VIP team of six by January 15, 2022. The two weeks of training from CVG consisted of project management, at-risk participant engagement, and database training, and was completed by mid-February. After the training, we began the CB3 VIP project construction. This included staff scheduling, hotspot identification, community stakeholder and in-road support, public education materials, uniform design, and event planning.
Creative Visions has been established for 26 years, serving at-risk youth and young adults. We have received widespread community and local agency support of our efforts to affect positive community change. We have developed mutually respectful relationships between our leadership at Creative Visions and law enforcement, each appreciating the necessity and value of each of our roles as we work towards safe and thriving communities. Creative Visions was selected to contract with the City of Des Moines as the community-based organization to implement the Violence Interruption Project.
In March 2022, we created and developed our brand, CB3 VIP, the Creative Visions Violence Interruption Project. The three represents the three categories of wraparound services we provide to our at-risk and high-at-risk participants. Those services include food and personal care, crime victim assistance, and risk needs and resilience case plan management and health model.
The implementation of the Creative Visions mission and vision and the training provided by Cure Violence Global are complementary and very similar. Creative Visions has a very comprehensive and wide range of services method to address conditions that lead to gun violence. The CVG model emphasizes the health awareness approach to the illness of gun violence, and the training emphasized the rules of engagement when addressing the individuals who are the highest at-risk and prone to gun violence. The CB3 project upholds these three pillars in our daily work and canvassing activities.
The Site Director, Ivette Mohammed, is responsible for project and policy creation, staff development, and trauma care and republic relations. Grant management, cost analysis, budget projections, as well as the liaison between the City Manager Office and the CB3 VIP Project. Supervisor Tim McCoy is responsible for the team development, scheduling, and working summits, hotspot identification, area mapping, business partnerships, staff briefing and debriefing, also mediation and canvas data, in-road development, participant counsel, risk needs and resilience plan assessments, database monitoring, and 72-hour shooting response coordination. He also ensures the suitability and credibility of the CB3 VIP staff maintaining projects' integrity. Outreach worker has hands-on community engagement, canvassing, relationship development with high-at-risk individuals, case plan assessment, and R&amp;R management, as well as development with high-risk individuals, as connecting participants to resources, linking the CB3 VIP Project to our staff development. Our outreach worker, John Martin, is able to effectively influence participants to better lifestyle opportunities, utilizing his own personal growth and accomplishments.
John, can you stand up so everyone can identify you? Awesome.
The Violence Interrupter, Ms. LaSonia Brown, maintains daily communication with inroads and has posts-on-street activity. She identifies potential conflicts and She identifies potential conflicts and prevents shooting retaliations through effective conflict resolution and mediation. She canvases hotspots daily, as well as continuing work to develop and maintain inroads, establish close rapport with the highest-at-risk individuals, and participant recruitment. Timothy Mohammed is our outreach production specialist. He conducts participant resource services, canvassing, counseling, and high-school intervention, as well as video promotion, public education graphics, event planning, website, social media design, podcast production, and commercials.
Our demographic includes high-at-risk groups age 13 to 25, who are potentially active shooters or who have been shot. They may have gang affiliation or association, have been recently released from incarceration, or have some historical family conflicts that are ongoing or existing. Also, they may be involved in some potential personal interpersonal rivalries.
The CVG assessment of a target area prone to experience the highest probability for gun violence was Evelyn K. Davis and Drake Park neighborhood. After team reviewing existing problematic areas of our experience with street activity, Creative Visions expanded the target area and mapped it out into four zones. Each zone is privately divided into four areas within each zone to identify staff member location and to main safety, maintain safety, excuse me, while canvassing. We will show up for any school shootings to determine if it is connected to our demographic and targeted population, as well as show our support, console, and offer assistance.
The typical day begins with a check-in of staff to ensure that all team members are in the proper spirit and mindset for canvassing hotspots and business zones. Each member briefs about the results of their intel, their in-road intel, social media searches, participant caseloads, and discusses ideas and events to inform the community of our efforts and how they can get involved. Each member canvases daily in pairs at minimum. Group canvassing is highly promoted and will increase as participants and/or staff increases. Daily contact with each participant is required, and a review of the R&amp;R Risk Needs and Resilience Plan and community events are discussed. The routine weekly review meetings with supervisors are conducted, and at the end of each workshop, team members debrief and check out with careful regard for the mental well-being of staff. Self-care is highly promoted.
And how did we do this? It's called the drip. What is the drip? First step is detection. Detecting violence by canvassing hotspots in our target areas, communicate with inroads and their circles to identify troubles, gather details about shootings to prevent retaliations, eyes and ears to the ground to learn potential threats, build trust and rapport with high-at-risk individuals to change their behaviors, link participants to CV3 wraparound services.
The second step in the drip is respond. When a shooting has occurred, the CV3 VIP team plans a shooting response within 72 hours. The VIPs determine if the shooting is relevant to our response model. We determine if it's gang-related, gang-related, I'm sorry. Did it happen due to a pre-existing beef? Can we identify any inroads or highest-at-risk participants in the area? And is anyone, or is retaliation likely? And lastly, does anyone on the team have a relationship with anyone involved that we can make influence to change their behavior?
Next step is to intervene. Public education, distributing zones where the shooting has occurred. CV3 VIP engages with community members in the zone of shooting. Community events are planned and conducted. CV3 VIPs engagement with businesses and agencies within the zone of the shooting, informing them that we want to keep their business safe and how they can be involved.
We host, we'll host an event to get community engagement and buy-in. We educate the community on resources available to encourage behavioral change. We recruit participants to guide them on a path away from violence. We develop a risk needs and resilience plan for the highest-at-risk. We introduce those high-at-risk individuals to new opportunities. By canvassing, social media, high-school events, and in-road communication, the CV3 VIPs obtain tips on potential threats. Our street credibility goes a long way. Resources available are determined in the R&amp;R assessment, and the participant informs us of their needs. The highest-at-risk, the Des Moines PD benefits because we reduce the amount of calls they receive of violence in the targeted zone, and we're a step toward a safe and thriving community.
Once we develop our community partners, business ambassadors, dedicated inroads, and active working participants, we can begin to notably reduce crime. Local agencies partner with us and provide resources. Businesses invest and have a unique view of potential threats. Participants gain peace of mind and a healthy outlook on their improved lifestyles and spread the word, and the city officials note a positive reduction in crime statistics.
The CV3 VIPs created and developed community-specific public education materials to be distributed and utilized as door hangers, banners, posters, and flyers. We also conduct workshops and trainings to gain better understanding of the impact of trauma existing in survival mode, addressing implicit bias, and more. Teachers, parents, caregivers, and community leaders are educated on street lingo used by the highest-at-risk to better enable them to identify potential threats they may hear when engaging with youth.
Our activities are geared to promote collective community engagement for support of our efforts to stop gun shootings. Informing the community that gun violence is an epidemic, that it is not normal, and can be prevented, is the objective of our stakeholder events. Our participant events are conducted to build rapport and trust relationship with the highest-at-risk individuals to maintain our influence in their conflict resolution choices. Also, highly increases the probability that we will share information about potential threats.
We have been successful in mediating numerous conflicts preventing retaliations. Our canvassing has reduced shootings reported in our canvassing area. Our participants are increasing their trust in our methods. Inroads are increasing and providing details about potential threats. Universities and hospitals are in support of our efforts and want to help. The CVG database is data-driven as it calculates the shooting preventions of all community-based organizations in the nation, and they, that's entered, and it calculates them against national shooting statistics to determine their shooting stats. The CV3 VIPs will work with the city to obtain shooting data to compile our shooting reduction stats specifically to our targeted demographic.
How do we measure success? First, community buy-in. Every block of our targeted area has inroads and/or community residents who are, purposes to have a clear line of communication that will and can foresee anything that could be turned into a violent transmission. To establish rapport with community members who trust us with highly sensitive information and consistently assist us in violence interruption, we have established safe quarters for VIs when our canvassing the community and hotspots. We'll have community members confident enough to participate in our shooting responses and interventions interruptions. And that is called duplicating ourselves. We notice a shift in community norms and safer communities.
Participants are high-at-risk and high-at-risk. When the individual has identified and committed to and completes their risk needs and resilience plan, the peer group of high-at-risk has changed. When they are able to affect their peers and friends in a positive manner, when we are able to help them reduce the number of reasons to resort in violent acts, we are able to help them adopt new cultural and social norms.
Staff development. When all staff has developed and maintaining a healthy lifestyle and choices, when their days 100% match their nights with no inconsistent behavior, when all inroads and high-at-risk individuals have a soft handoff to the necessary staff to complete the case plan, when staff has guided the participant to completion of all recommended R&amp;R plans. When staff has reduced violence transmission in our targeted area by at least 30%. Community businesses. When we have at least 10 businesses in our targeted area become business ambassadors with tier commitments. When the local businesses donate and contribute to our community events and participant needs. When local businesses have committed to be safe places for our staff and participant. When local businesses have become hubs for our events and gatherings. When local businesses have experienced a decline in violence transmission to their establishment.
Summer activities will increase due to promoting the message of stop the violence and stop the shooting. Our canvassing is ongoing, and we're always seeking concerned community members and maintaining a presence to prevent shooting. We are planning to submit a monthly newsletter available both in print and online. We want to enhance the business ambassador project as an integral role in the project's implementation. If they elect to do so, they can increase their ambassador status by selecting tier sponsorship packages we will develop that will increase their business and clientele by depending upon their tier pack, depending upon their tier package selected, they can receive logo promotion on our advertisement, on our pub ad, and be mentioned on social media, as well as appearances, appearances on podcast productions. The business is a supporter of our gun violence prevention efforts. They have an interest in the well-being of the target area. The business is a safe place if a threat of violence is present. It can be identified by the logo and certificate displayed at their establishment. We will select and provide opportunities to, they will select and provide opportunities to assist with our community awareness events. We created this platform for business buy-in and to obtain their support and feel protected in their place of business. We are designing the logo and certificate of recognition for our business ambassadors. Once they have all been, once we have identified all of our business ambassadors and the brand is established, we can increase their opportunity to support our project and get involved by presenting them with opportunities to help us, limited to, including but not limited to fundraising, event planning, donations, et cetera.
Ivette, could you go back about three slides? Can you go back to, yeah? Yeah, go forward now. Another one. One more. I think you, there's, uh, can you unpack that just a little bit here? So, six active participants, tell me what that means. You want to take that?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Tim.
Yes, six, the six active participants are individuals who have been deemed high-at-risk through our assessment. This is after gaining rapport with them so that they felt comfortable enough to become a participant. What this does is it gives them the opportunity to come into our ranks, to develop themselves, and we do have a program that assists them with all their wraparound services, so any of their needs are addressed. This is the process where we let them determine what they need. We don't force anything on them, and we help them complete that through the development, excuse me, of the program.
All right, and so then when you say to canvassing and obtaining, what, tell me what that means.
Well, with canvassing, we have a routine or schedule every day where we canvass hotspots and business areas. In doing that, we also engage with all the individuals, whether it be just a resident or a high-at-risk. Once we see somebody who is deemed to be high-at-risk or one of our inroads has done a soft handoff and let us know about that participant, we then gain rapport with that participant to start addressing their needs and changing their mindset on the carrying of guns and the violence transmission.
This is really important with the participant because these are individuals who may have historically thought they may have had 1,000 reasons to resort to gun violence, and through the relationship they have with our staff and the influence of turning their lives around and making some positive choices, to get them down from high-at-risk to just at-risk to medium-risk to low-risk to no-risk is very important, and those are the individuals that have checked off all the items on their risk needs and resilience plan assessment, and now they're able to canvass with us to affect the change. So people see that they're turning around too, and the community is really responsive to the efforts of the team.
All right, so now, at a great neighborhood meeting, not in May, but in April, there was a young man there who spoke. Is he in this group somehow?
Yes. He's someone who actually worked his way through the program.
Okay.
And has been deemed, he went from high-at-risk to no-risk. And after he became no-risk, he actually became what we call an active working participant, and he assists us in our interruptions now.
Okay.
And provides.
Is he, is he sort of like a volunteer then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Gotcha. All right, that's helpful. Thank you.
The goal is to get the community buy-in so that as we are doing shooting responses, we can engage all of the community to actively participate. If we could do a march within a shooting response within that 72 period of time, and residents in that demographic come out and march with us, we think it will be very impactful and send a message to the shooters that people in this area care and are watching.
Yeah.
Hopefully will deter.
And so the, the youth, I guess, until 25, that's still youth, that you're identifying or finding, are those all through your own sources, or, I mean, are you taking information from either schools or?
There's, oh, sorry, let me cut you off.
Yeah.
There's a few ways that that is done. Some of it is through our personal relationships and rapport with the area.
Call that inroads.
And we call those inroads. Some of it is done through canvassing. We obtain the credibility and rapport with the higher-risk when we're out canvassing, because when they see us repeatedly, they gain more trust for us. At that point in time, it gives us the opportunity to address them directly. We also do get some of our participants from the schools because we understand that when we're talking about young, high-at-risk individuals, a lot of them are going to come from our public schools. So we do also engage with the children at school. So that would be East, North, Roosevelt, Hoover, all of those schools we have been inside of actively gaining rapport from the high-at-risk as well as the at-risk and people who aren't at-risk.
And at this point, are you engaging with the police department at all, or any of their officers, or the neighborhood officers?
The VIP staff, the Violence Interrupters and outreach workers, their basic mission is to go out and get intel, so if the police are on the scene, they are not. Creative Visions and the relationship that Akel has built with the police department allows he and I to engage with them and also work with them, you know? So I think, I think it's a good marriage, but because of the nature of sensitivity and the ability to get trust, to build that trust rapport, it's not a good idea to see the team engaging with police because that could be misinterpreted. They could interpret that we are working with the police to entrap them and that kind of thing, and that's not what the program is about. But basically, our goal is to change mindsets and change behaviors and get individuals to realize that there's a better means of resolving conflict than using guns. So they trust that we don't, we're not concerned about any of whatever else they're doing in their life, we just want them to stop shooting. So it's important that the staff, the VIPs, and the outreach workers are in a position that they can gain their trust. So Akel and I, when we do interact and work with the police, that's Akel and I's role.
And that is due to credibility. When they see anybody engaging with police officers, it makes them highly skeptical. And what that in turn does is it minimizes the amount of information that we can get from our inroads and participants, as well as the high-at-risk individuals.
Okay. I think we were at the last slide. Does anybody else have any questions?
I think we were at the last slide, does anybody else have any questions?
I had a quick one while we're here.
Go ahead.
How do you measure prevention? You had the chart with the number of preventions per month.
She said, how do you measure the preventions every month versus the shootings? How do you measure that?
The measurement will come when we're able to compile the amount of shootings we prevent with the amount of shootings that occurred in our targeted demographic. So we're working with PAU and the city to make sure that we can get shooting data so we can show how, what percentage of our mediations have reduced the shootings. We need, we need both data to do that. How we measure the success of our programs is if we have a situation like there's a drive-by and there's no retaliation. You know, like for example, the, the very first shooting that occurred in our demographic while we had this, this program occurred on 13th and College. And that was a drive-by. The shooters lived in West Des Moines. The shooters were kids and the parents knew each other and it was due to like a historical beef. So we got those families together, they were able to mediate that, and there was an agreement that the kids would not go and shoot up West Des Moines. And we know that because we haven't had any shootings in West Des Moines to respond to.
Yeah, Yvette, I think it'd be better if you could speak into the microphone because Indira's on the phone, and she's the one that had the question.
Okay. So do I need to repeat the answer?
No, Indira, did you hear that?
Uh, I think I got most of it, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Indira.
All right, anybody have anything else?
I, I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing. And I'm glad that we've got this partnership off the ground. I mean, we, we know that from a scope perspective, there is more gun violence in, in our community and every community than we have. Resources and programs like this and, and with our law enforcement to address directly. But this is part of how we build and how we respond and how we provide better service and better safety. And, and so I'm appreciative that Creative Visions is willing to partner with the city on this. And I think it's going to be really important as we continue to track this going forward. We know there is, we know there's a need. And we know it's, we know it's important to, to interrupt the process. You know, any, any incidence of gun violence is, is a tragedy, but if we're not doing everything we can to interrupt that process and, and to keep lives on track in our community safer, we couldn't do it without you and look forward to continued conversation.
We're grateful as well. Thank you.
I've got another question. So, so you have your target area. And how do you know that youth from that area aren't taking their violence outside of the area? So you're, you're primarily working in the target area, but how do you figure that out? I'm, I'm just curious how.
There, there's really no way to gauge that besides checking up on the participants. We do follow up with our inroads and high-risk individuals to make sure that they're still maintaining that healthy lifestyle. We do have a pulse outside of our target area, we just don't have the manpower to man it like we do our target area. So we do have inroads outside of the target area also to keep a pulse on those things. A lot of those individuals have dual residents and things of that nature. So we do have to follow up with them to make sure that their behavior hasn't got problematic.
One of the good things, our, our, our violence interrupter has established relationships and, and intel is really important. So we're really hoping that our mediations and the resources that we provide and the activities that we keep our participants engaged in will deter them from focusing on gun violence. Part of the training model in terms of engaging with them allowed us, they, they demonstrated a process of basically making the participant aware of the insanity of their own decisions and their own words. So a, a high at risk individual may come to you in, in the heat of the moment, very upset about something, and they're ready to go do something that they shouldn't be doing, and you just listen. The first, the, one of the key things that individuals who are in this kind of behavior, no one listens to them. Everyone tells them what to do, what they shouldn't do, pull your pants up, stop doing this, stop, and they don't want to hear it. So when they come in, they engage with us, number one, we're listening. Number two, they don't feel the judgment, they don't feel that negative critique, they know that we genuinely care, we believe that there are inherently no bad people, that conditions and circumstances that you may have encountered in your life are responsible for some of the decisions you make. And we feel that if we show them that unconditional love, allow them to make those decisions for themselves, that's the process of changing that mindset and then exposing them to new opportunities. One of the individuals wanted to go buy a weapon. And La Sonja, you know, identified that this was an individual that was really interested in recording music. And she made a deal with him that she would take him to the studio if he would not do that, and he did not do that, and he's been in the studio ever since. So, you know, just giving them alternatives when there's, when we're, we're, we're in a community that doesn't offer a lot of activities for young people in the areas that they reside in. And because of that, a devil's, idle mine is a devil's workshop, so to speak. So if we can involve them with positive engagements consistently and routinely, we, we will continue to work to reduce the highest at risk down to low at risk to the moderate risk to no at risk.
And for example, just to give a, a slight example, one of our working active participants was actually high at risk. And how we know that he's not still high at risk is because he's canvassing with us, he's helping us interrupt. Also, we keep them busy with doing constructive things, like for example, taking them out of their normal scope of activity. For example, we took some of our participants to the driving range to teach them how to work on their stroke, work golf. Well, we know that if they're with us at the driving range, they're not shooting. So we keep a pulse on it that way also by keeping them so engaged in constructive activities that they don't have time for anything problematic.
One more question, promise, this is the last one. So what role does the faith community have in, in what you're doing?
We have Reverend Whitfield's on our hiring panel, and he reaches out. We want to engage with them more. It's very important, especially as the, as the weather gets better. We talked with them about doing and hosting events at their facilities. And right now, we're, we're still building the program. So right now, we're planning those activities, we're doing the mapping of the area, so that will be something that we'll incorporate, we'll continue to expand our canvassing to include the clergy and their locations.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, anything else?
I just want to ask about the language barriers and interpreting things. Are you, I, I assume you're doing more things in different languages and do you find that that, because the kids might know English, but the parents might not.
Yes, I'll, I'll go ahead and answer that. That's part of the reason for a lot of our pub ed, because we do understand, especially when dealing with the, the African community, as well as the Hispanic community, that that language barrier is one of the main catalysts to the children being able to be involved in problematic activities. So on the pub ed, we do things like, we explain what guns mean by today's terms. So things like blicky, hammer, pole. Now the parents are starting to know the lingo, so if there's ever a situation where their children are having a conversation about doing something and they're using that verbiage, the, the parents will now know, unknowing to the child. So that will help them give a foot, get a foothold on anything that can happen inside of their household. So we do also work with the parents to educate them on terminology, what clothes look like, what signs look like, what certain activity could look like if they're involved in something that can turn into a violent transmission. And so we do educate the parents also because that's the most important aspect, because that's where it starts.
Plus, we also try to recruit inroads. I know that, that are from different languages. What was the Dole and what was that nationality, not Liberian?
Uh, no, he was not Liberian, he was Sudan, Tunis.
So the more people that we, we also have reached out to the Hispanic community so that they can be our voices for the individuals who don't speak that. And since you mentioned that, I think it's a good idea that we translate our pub ed into different languages. And I appreciate that because violence is not just limited to those that speak English. So if we can tailor our pub ed in different languages, and I hadn't thought of that, Connie, so I appreciate that. I think that's important.
But the school district has a lot of opportunity maybe to help translate some things for you.
I'd like to ask the team one quick question. You said the high schools that you have, have worked with and the schools that you've worked with, essentially the overall population, Des Moines Public Schools, what, 30,000 students? Do you have a sense in the area that you work of the number of at-risk individuals, either high to low, but ones that should, I mean, are we talking about dozen or 100 or, I mean, have you gotten your arms around the, the numbers that you are dealing with?
I, I believe that fluctuates a lot due to things like incarceration, people changing their minds about their activity. So it's kind of hard to get an exact number. I, I do know that in our targeted area, that we've been working with over a dozen, for sure, over a dozen. And I don't know, that, that, that can go up and down, honestly. Our, our goal is to reduce that high at risk by changing their mindset and their activities, especially when they're behind a gun. So I, it's kind of hard, it really is kind of hard to get a gauge on the, the number of high-risk individuals because it's, it's created at such a rapid rate due to like TV, music, things of that nature that also contribute to people wanting to live that type of lifestyle.
As a part of our next steps, future next steps, we want to try to figure out a way to work with school counselors to identify a minimum, and we want to just start with maybe two individuals from each of the high schools that are considered at risk and high, and then work with those two individuals. And as we work with them, they can help us. I mean, the word-of-mouth process and people, and once, once they determine that our resources are real, that it's not a trick or a setup, and that we genuinely care about the conditions, the word will spread. But if we could get, this is the plan, and we're not quite sure how to do that yet, there's a lot of loopholes that you have to go to when you're engaging with students in school, a lot, a lot of, a lot of dynamics that have to be taken into consideration. But if we're able to obtain two of the highest at risk from each school and get them to understand and buy into the program that we have, we think we'll be able to effectively reduce the amount of school shootings. We really believe that, so we're working on that.
Because we, we use their influence also.
Which is very important.
Which is very important. As well as our team, the reason why we dress the way that we dress is because we have to look cooler than the people with the guns.
That's for sure.
Well, I appreciate all the work, and it's been pointed out by other council members.
Mayor?
Yep, Indira.
Um, I just want to say that I really appreciate y'all's approach to this. I'm really excited to see how this program evolves and grows moving forward. Apologize if you hear a garbage truck outside my window right now. But I was curious, you had mentioned a lack of opportunities and a lack of things for kids to do in the areas they live. I was kind of wondering what opportunities do you think need to be developed? What kind of like infrastructure, like social infrastructure can we build to assist this mission?
Did you get that question?
She said, what kind of infrastructure can we build socially? I didn't catch the part before that.
Sorry about that. Essentially, you mentioned opportunities that kids don't have a lot of opportunities in the areas that they live, things to do. And I, I was wondering, like, are we talking like jobs, we're talking like community programs? Like what kind of social infrastructure can we build to assist in this mission?
Yes, ma'am, that would be all of the above. And usually we let them determine what it is that they need because in that stance, we know that they'll be fully committed. So something as simple as a bus pass all the way up to enrollment in college, we have resources for studios since we know that that's a big hotspot. We also, we, I mean, we do a number of things is.
Yeah. And, and to your, to your question, Connie, Tim and Akel have been meeting with the immigrant communities. In fact, there's an organization, pardon my memory, I can't think of the name of it right now, but we've literally purchased two computers to put in their establishment that's tied to Creative Visions, and hopefully that can be a catalyst to address some of the language barrier as well, and also increasing the education.
And to even further explain that situation, like, one of the agencies that we're working with, Dole Lardin is one of the people that we're working with at that agency. We actually obtained his help out canvassing the businesses. We were talking to one business owner, he just so happened to be there and said, you know what, we need you guys in our community because we don't understand anything. And from that point, we sit and had lunch at the Ethiopian Grill over there in Dogtown, and we're assisting them and they're assisting us. So it's a, it's definitely a good marriage.
Also, I mean, just real quick, they're very modest.
And you're not, we know.
Just a couple of things. We work as a team. One of the things, Indira, that you were talking about, you know, the team is now working with the fathers' luncheon that they're going to do, bringing the young people in, they'll compete to, to mentor these young people. They have grown men that are coming in, they're going to cook out at Evelyn K. Davis Park. There's also a women's group that's getting ready to do also a breakfast. You know, also the, with the activities that are taking place, they are planning to take individuals like to, to play, you know, at the, at the civic center. There'll be other events that, that we've been taking young people in, you know, to be able to do it, like Tim mentioned before about the, the golfing. You know, they may never golf again, but they'll know why they won't, you know, because they, they hit it. But, but the key is they'll be participating, you know, in activity that they normally don't get to. And we'll be bringing, you know, working with them with the basketball, you know, events that the police department and others and Creator and Urban Dreams do at the park. We, we participate with activities, it's already set up. We work with Will Keats down there and bringing the individuals to a studio, you know, those that need a studio, so we're providing that. We are also working with Ruwan and some other individuals to talk about job training. You know, we're also working with the unions to get individuals in, you know, the job market, you know, to show them there's something more to, more than, you know, just being in the street. You know, we also are working with DMAC and you and I, you know, to get individuals focusing and going to school, starting on a two-year, you know, piece. So we're doing that, Indira, in doing, you know, in with our partners to be able to give them and set them on another track.
Thank you. All that. We're proud, we're proud of the work, we're grateful to the city for your support and belief in us. We want to make you proud, we're working very diligently to improve ourselves and improve this process. It, it caught us a little off-guard to realize that we had to start from the ground as much as we did, we thought we would have a little bit more tools handed to us, but because of the history that Akel has established with Creative Visions, we had a really good foundation and a great model that already existed, very similar to the CBG model. In fact, I think ours is quite more comprehensive. So we think it's a great marriage, and we look forward to this continued relationship.
Well, and we'll look forward to further updates as time goes along. Maybe we ought to do it every six months or so and give us sort of a feel for how it's going, but we really appreciate your efforts and, and it sounds like we're seeing some good progress. Thank you so much for what you're doing. All right, Scott, anything else? Thank you all for being here. This meeting is adjourned.